Okay, we'll call these some time in need.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All company.
Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Councilmember Brinker.
Here.
Councilmember Conklin.
Here.
Councilmember Missouri. Councilmember Stevenson.
Here.
Mayor Law.
Here.
All the comments and requests, our comments from the city residents back there. Yes. Do you know where you live?
Hello, Dr. Watson, South Island Street. Uh, not going to talk about, when we talk about the last meeting, but I'm not talking about the thing, just the events that went around this. Uh, last week was just an absolute insult to procedure and expectations. We did it as a whole. We experienced aggression from residents that decided that it was either their way or a riot instead of having any sort of discussion. The threatening of the downtown manager and the, and then being gaslit to say it wasn't happening, it's just the horrible. I don't know the specifics she faced, but I do understand what it takes to need the protection of multiple police officers as she exited this building. Followed by the turning on the city council with big threats of actions will be taken if they do not get their way. Then attacking a self-identified non-Christian with homophobic hate for expressing the idea of inclusivity of winter holidays in our community. I even heard the echoes afterwards of anti-Semitic statements said in the back during the meeting. On Saturday, I spent the morning and afternoon freezing on Main Street, talking to anyone who wanted to about the events surrounding this decision and how they feel affects the safety of our city. I learned a lot from our community and surprisingly, a majority of people who came to the town for the festivities were either county residents or visiting family. In total, I spoke to about forty each of city residents and those that were not. Some even said that they were going home to what we're recording from the previous meeting. A resounding amount of the conversations from everyone were in agreement that utilization of these tactics and affirmation they work make our city unsafe and is not the way to get your desired outcome. I understand that both of you in the affirmative were looking to come to a use of mutual resolution, even councilman confident imploring some humility and an inward reflection of those in attendance of their behaviors. However, all they saw was victory and their perceived blame. This is a danger precedent for our precedent for our community that you can harass and threaten to get what you want. I also fear that this was more of a reflection of these community members behavior than an acceptable. Are we going to have a riot if one of our non-Christian community members submits any request next year and a similar group to the attendance last week disagrees? We hear the cries of where are these people? No, only one resident submits and shows up for a use request, but a group attends en masse. We just yield to them because they have the larger presence. Additionally, the fear of litigation from burning down this request on principle alone that you cannot strongarm this city. The next time anyone uses similar tactics, you should fear the same. Since it worked this time in conjunction with the request, you have no footing to base refusal on harassment and threats in the future. It is your job as city council to uphold proper parliamentary procedure, which this was a complete mockery of.
Any else? Thank you. And I'm, residents, with Jack there. Okay, four B, East Prime Park. Third through January eleventh.
House Speaker Canto and two maids of LLC is requesting to place the following holiday displays at Prime Park from December third through January eleventh, twenty twenty-five. An inflatable menorah for Hanukkah, an inflatable ganora for Kwanzaa, a tree decorated with fruit and flameless candles for Saginaya, a yule goat inflatable with small yule goats for Yule, an aluminum pole for Festivus, and a Buddha satchel for Buddha Sunday for Bodhi Day. These displays would all be accompanied by a plaque describing the holiday's origins and traditions.
Right, so if you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer them, but.
Well, I'm not a history buff. And I, and I know you're probably versed in each one of those, but I'm not sure that you personally represent each one of those animals religions. And I'm not certainly it's not all the religions requested. Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure it's a genuine request. Uh, it might be more of a rebuttal to the results of last week's request. Uh, if it's genuine, it, it's not so bad. But that's too many. I mean, that's, that's, that's uh, and I'm not sure they fall during the the height of their religions doesn't fall during the dates requested. That just sounds like and looks like everything just got thrown in one big pot. So that I usually support those requests. If they're genuine, and, and I think you, you want to try to make a point that everything should be accepted. Uh, I'm just not sure that, that everything there is pertinent. To, um, and you can, you can talk back to your early rebuttal, but that's just sort of how, when I first saw it, I I said, well, that doesn't get celebrated during December to January. That's another time of year. Well, not that one either, and why?
Which one? I'm fairly certain all of those get celebrated.
They're all during.
Monica's, only twenty-fifth, Saturnalia is twenty-first, Yule is also the twenty-fifth.
I did put, I did put January eleventh, just in case I couldn't get down to get everything. Everything back. If you want to shorten that, I'm fine with that, too. Uh, as long as it's through December. And it is a genuine request. I do not personally represent, I, I'm representing all of those so that everyone, or at least as many as I can, get represented.
That's what, that's what I meant about genuine. I'm not sure you're all of those.
Why can't, why can't?
You mean, well, you could be, are you?
Uh, so I don't.
But, and, and did somebody designate you to represent them for all those different religions?
Well, why does that matter?
Well, well, I would think that you could be an outpiece for somebody if they asked you to represent them and say, hey, here's our, our, uh, time of year, would you talk for us? You know, and if you are, that's one thing that we're are you all those things, all these?
I am, I am witnessing all of these communities showing their faith and their beliefs uh, in the same way uh, they did yesterday, or last week. The, uh,
Can I say something? Cause the request is coming from Canadian. These are all religions that my source sells inventory for, that residents of our town actually participate and follow. I personally am, if we need personalization, I'm on the request for Yule and Saturnalia for my religious beliefs. Um, I have a personal friend who celebrates Bodhi Day, who I would represent. I'm not going to help them because they did not give me permission to help him. Uh, we have friends who that, uh, celebrate Kwanzaa and friends that celebrate Hanukkah that were also vocal to us about wanting representation, but I'm not going to list names of people who didn't give me permission to name them.
Individuals that we've spoken to as well, we're honestly quite scared of from last week's, uh, display. Uh, so a lot of them cannot or will not publicly have to fight for this stuff, and I would, and I wouldn't.
Yeah, I would then ask him names.
But this.
I would just direct you and to see where you're coming from and how genuine this request is.
It is, yeah.
Any other question? Uh, normally we get a diagram of what the request looks like, size. I don't know how big your inflatables are.
Oh, you just, uh, I, okay, the user, I could have the, the size.
The size has gone up.
It probably grows, I thought, just my first time submitting a request.
Are they twenty feet, two?
They're not twenty.
They're all under eight feet. Most of them are six feet. One is eight feet.
What are the questions?
One is three and a half feet tall, one is eight feet, one is two feet. Uh, two are eight feet. Uh, so three are eight feet, one is six foot, one is three and a half, and one is two feet.
And your plaques are bigger than this?
Uh, I, I still need to put them together. I don't have an exact of what they're gonna, yeah, they're like, look at it.
They'll be like on the, on the each individual display, yeah, it's being incorporated, not centered.
Any other question? Uh, other than we were having difficulty downtown with our power source currently right now. So there are lights that are currently out because we're having difficulty.
Okay.
Uh, so we need to get a generator. So, so. Well, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. We don't get it resolved.
You actually work with, with.
Yeah.
I did, on that part, you're just, I work for a shot. I don't really do it.
Because inflatables, we're gonna take electrical, otherwise it's gonna be off.
Yeah, I got you.
Just, uh.
Any other question? Do I have a question?
I, I would move to table this, uh, in light of the fact that I've had, uh, additional conversations with downtown Lock Haven and, and their plans for Prime Park next year. So, uh, since we are partners with downtown Lock Haven, uh, then I, I'd rather retable this until, uh, I think it's being back. So if we can table it for a week, I love that. If we can table it for two weeks, I would like that even more.
That's gonna take up most of the time of the request. So this is for this year.
Oh, I'm sorry. The point is, I apologize.
So it's September eleventh, twenty twenty-five, because that's very, yeah, that's, that can be confusing, but it's is for this season, one more place, I will get you. Okay. Yes. How's your name?
My name is KB Char. I live on First Street. And I fear that if you do not support all religion, then if you deny this request, the city is setting themselves up for legal action. That's my, that's my concern for this city, and I don't know if you have the resources. You know? That's what happens when you allow one religion to be placed. You have to let them off.
That's it. Other questions? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, second?
I'll second it.
Motion for a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, just the, the thought process. Um, you know, last week was brought up. This week is the new week, and you make a great statement. Uh, regardless of how people feel in the community regarding anything that we do, our time apart has been a freedom of speech location. Regardless if you like it or not. So last week should have been seven zero because if we, if it had been three, four the other way, imagine the ministry of suing for the same right. Regardless of if you like how people acted.
If you're suing, it would have been very Christian of you.
I, I, I know, but what I'm saying is the, the, the legal standing is, it doesn't matter what we feel or what we think, it's what's principle. It goes all the way back to the flag of what if we allow one, we have to allow the other. And I get the point that you're making. You made the point last week. And that's the, that's the stance. So even going forward as a community, if Triangle Park is going to be the the freedom of speech place that it is, everything could be touched. Regardless if we like it, we don't like it, I don't worship any of these, that's okay. But that's the legal principle of public, not what I feel, not what I like. So that's, that's the stance that council should be taking during this whole process. Now, why I mentioned the sizes. If it's twenty feet, we're, we don't have, we don't have space, and I'm not sure if eight feet, eight feet, eight feet, six feet might be taking up the whole rest of the green space. So I think we also have to be considerate of the space. So case in point, in the spring, would you be happy with a twenty-foot recross up there? That's what I'm just saying, to take out the whole space. So if we're going to use this space and allow people to use this space, we do have to be considerate of the space throughout the process. Otherwise, then we get a tricky situation, because we don't have right now an ordinance of how big of, of an item. Um, case in point, last year, we gave permission to you to put a sign up. We knew how big that was. Um, I mean, if it was gonna take up the whole entire park, we'd probably deny the request and ask the, the sign to be smaller. Um, so that's why I asked about that side, because we do have to be considerate of the whole entire space. Um, that is there, so.
Okay. Councilman.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yep.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. I do. Four C, use of North Road Street by Yule Quarter, reading.
This is the second reading of the quest to close Road Street from Willards Alley to East Church Street for outdoor dining and live music uh, for the following weekend of summer, May twenty-third to twenty-fifth, June thirteenth through fourteenth, twentieth and twenty-first, July eleventh through twelve, twenty fifth, uh, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, August eighth and ninth, August twenty-second and twenty-third, and the service will take place three P M. until one A M. Sunday. The music ending at, uh, eleven.
Do I have a motion, seven? Right. Motion for a second, biggie. The question or comments? Call for the.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yes.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. Three D, closure of Leather Alley on Avenue to Stone Alley.
Here's a victim of timing. Uh, for the annual Christmas tree sale for citizens' hose, they traditionally use Leather Alley from Belton Avenue to Stone Alley. The request came late this year for the use of the area for sales to begin before Thanksgiving through December twenty-seventh. So with council's approval, then this will be the first reading of the street closure. And then next week, when it's approved, it will be official. Until then, the chief of police is authorizing the prohibition and restriction of traffic and parking for a limited time period in that area.
Which, yes.
Emotions are through that.
Yeah, a motion for a, I mean, a, a, for discussion on the motion. Right? Yes. You don't have a meeting?
It's weird. So document on the door, which is the official posting of the city, a resolution on the door list.
Oh, thank you. Anything else? Of them?
Councilmember Alexander.
Yes.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. Any other, uh, comments or questions?
I have no, your honor.
For Public Carrier on the proposed, uh, twenty twenty-four proposed budget. Purpose of the hearing is to afford the public an opportunity to comment and make observations on the recommended budget as reflected in ordinances number twenty twenty-four dash zero six and twenty twenty-four dash zero seven. Comment from agencies and organizations in the city. You're from Sewer, is that correct?
Correct. Uh, Sewer Superintendent Dave Sorgen is here. Um, to remind everybody, just a brief overview, about thirty-two percent of the sewer funds expended are for wages and benefits, another twenty-five percent for obligations, and twenty-seven percent for debt, which covers not only, um, the old debt service for the large tank that is down there, but also the new debt service for the plant that went into operation in twenty fourteen. The city processes, uh, about two point four million gallons a day in wastewater for not only the city, but nine other municipalities who are bulk customers of the city. Uh, we also maintain thirty-six miles of collection line and do our own utility billing for sewer, which is coupled with walk. If you pop over to page fifty-eight, you can see a list of accomplishments and objectives for next year. And Dave can go over some of those with you and answer some questions.
Yeah, of course, sir. Yes, so for my treatment, uh, the industrial user compliance comes out December thirtieth, so we'll be implementing that as we go into twenty twenty-five. The nutrients and everything to our industrial users. We made our nutrient limits for the year for the nitrogen phosphorus at the plant that ended September thirtieth. New year started October first. So we're all caught up there. Our U V system looking to get it upgraded. We're working with G D and F, Steve Gibson, to upgrade our U Vs. Um, U V system was obsolete in twenty seventeen, three years after the plant got, got running. So it is going to be looking to get upgraded. Uh, he has found retro fit stuff from Trojan, a U V system. We're also, so also looking to do other places that have same. Start the weekly. Uh, we got all of our tanks cleaned this year, had a lot of grit. Be another improvement that I would like to see is some grit removal. Uh, the old plant had it, this plant is supposed to have it, but I don't know where it went, went up the door before I came. And that's, we're gonna have another operator going to be moving up to an agent position here this month. So I'm hoping to get him into the chief operator position next year or so. Move him up.
The chief operator position is in the budget. If Vacant State became the superintendent, and also the wage for that position is in the ordinance that council passed for this year. It really is a tremendous help when you have both of those individuals, predominantly because of the amount of reporting that's required, not only monthly, quarterly, but annually to D E P and E P A. Uh, because we do have the large industrial component as well. It enables one to focus more on the industrial and one to focus more on the overall treatment and collection system. Uh, we still have three or four applicants for the sewer collection forum that next week we'll be interviewing and hopefully hiring one of those individuals to take over in that vacancy. That's the individual who supervises the, uh, thirty miles of lines that does repairs and replacements on those with, uh, the team of one. And, um, come from the other crews, they also run and operate the camp that we have, which we use not only in sewer, but we use it in the stormwater system and also in the levee for the conduit inspections that have to be done every seven years.
Seven five. Any else, force? No.
I don't have any for you, for Dave. I, I just say Phil will not be volunteering or distributing.
He's great.
He says, thank you, but no thank you.
Sure.
Yeah.
So we learned what he never wants.
Uh, yeah, he, not, no.
It's part of the nation, but I didn't really want to know.
He just said that was a crappy job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right. Um, we did have a tremendous year, I think, overall because of Dave's operating skills. Uh, he barely, if ever, used the tank in multiple townships. Um, predominantly that's through Dave's skill in, in keeping the plant running. Uh, as well, it's relatively from small amounts of rain until they came all at once. And so that helps us utilize our better that we have, and that's part of Dave's overview and control that helps us really lessen the cost that we all share through, through the sewer authority for the maintenance of the big tank. So when we fill that, somebody's gotta clean that out. So not filling it is a benefit to all of us because we don't have to pay to have it. So, thank you.
I was, thanks very much. Any else on that?
All right, so we're on to the airport. Airport, Doug looks this year. Uh, little bit about the airport, fifteen percent is debt. One of those debt services ends this year, another one ends in twenty twenty-six. Final debt service is on the books from the twenty twenty-one borrowing. Uh, that is through twenty forty-one. Uh, I did hand out to council and gave Doug at the airport, put together some information through October of this year, and you can see that arrivals and departures are up nineteen percent. The sale of Jet A is up eight percent, which is, uh, something that uh, Doug negotiates individually with the main contractors that need the fuel um, this year compared to just regularly stocking it, so he knew how much we needed for each of those contractors to keep that in stock, so that definitely managed much better thanks to Doug. Uh, we did see a jump in credit card sales compared to cash sales, but overall, sales were pretty much even at point four percent, um, gain. And, uh, let Doug talk a little bit about what's been going on down there.
So basically, uh, the main thing this year was we finally got the tanker run after a year and a half, so. Uh, that's a tanker one, we're very happy with that. Tanker two, uh, the size of Thor just wasn't feasible to replace that. So we very insulated and resheathed it, but it looks nice. Um, in the works, we have the road access. And last I heard from McFarlane Johnson was a self-serve fuel and relocating the power to get out. So that's probably gonna happen first, which makes sense, to bring the power out, they have to do a digging for to put the new access here, so. Uh, as far as the airport inspection is here, I've not heard any of the B O A. Uh, still a bit of this time, but you know, they're short staffed, so I don't know, we're gonna have it this year running.
A lot of people changing positions in the bureau. The projects that will need to be completed that are already in process with the B O A, which Doug mentioned, are the, um, self-fuel system and the rehab of the, the access where the parking area. Uh, we will be doing on our own the Digiwix update, which is in place of the basic A W O S. There also needs to be the completion of a fence installation, uh, for the human defense, uh, entities to control their access to where they come onto the airport grounds. Uh, as part of that, the through defense agreement went June fifth to, uh, the Bureau of Aviation. They, uh, requested eight detailed responses at the end of October. The city's working on that. One of those is the establishment of the permanent fence uh, with a permanent controlled access through defense area. And that is being paid for ninety percent by the Bureau of Aviation. And the engineers currently, um, in the final stages of design for that and has the property surveyed because that was an issue to some, uh, property owners. The next largest thing that people certainly are interested in is the solar field has not disappeared. Um, like everything it takes to want. But right now, the civil service company.
But right now, the civil service company uh, it's working with Tangent Energy has submitted their land development application to the city planner, so that'll need to go through the planning commission. Uh, they also are about ready to go for their building permits through um, the zoning and uniform construction code office here. And uh, they are working with getting the electric hookup with Kurt Garner for P P and L to go from the solar field onto the grid. And Kurt's been working really well with, with Tangent to find the best location to put that. Uh, the original location that was selected was turned down by the property. So, uh, we're looking at an alternative, but we'll definitely get that moving. Uh, probably once or twice a week, we hear from Tangent, just with an update. Our Sympax is the project manager, he will be continuing to update you regularly now about the status of that project, now that it's actually in a better state than waiting and waiting. Uh, U G I does have a gas main that goes through there, neither U G I nor the city has an easement for that uh, that anyone can find. So U G I is interested in actually abandoning that location and moving their main out of that field and putting it along the roadway. So they are working, U G I is working on those plans right now. Uh, that was a bit of a surprise to both uh, city and Tangent, um, they got that survey to find that one. We do have a water line that goes through there, water main, and we have an easement that they'll agree to as part of that part. The airport subcommittee, which is Councilmember Brinker, Councilmember Stevenson, and Councilmember Sorden continue to be in conversation with the county about a possible merger of forces to oversee the operations of the airport, uh, that's in solicitor's hands right now. And that, when the solicitor is finalizing the paperwork, that'll have to go to the F A A and Bureau of Aviation for their review, edits, adjustments, and eventual sign off. Uh, the city planners in communication with uh, the planning division of the airport about the uh, couple parcels of land that don't have aviation use that are associated with the airport map and having those removed, she's been in that conversation for a couple months about getting that updated, so that our map gets more accurate.
Anyo? Anyone have any questions? I can probably sort of share. Uh, four C, it is a ruling for twenty four, twenty twenty four dash zero six. Uh, twenty five budget, and or the twenty twenty four zero seven, setting the twenty twenty five real estate millage.
In the city's budget book, which is available online from the homepage directly, there's a link. If you turn to page eighteen, you can find that currently unchanged, uh, although it will be edited before the final adoption. The total major funds are thirteen million, six hundred and fifty nine thousand. And the real estate millage will adjust to twenty point oh mills for general purpose land and nine point eight mills for general purpose buildings. Uh, that is additionally discussed in the budget book for uh, those who are interested and was discussed at prior council meeting. As council attempts to return the single rate millage like all of the neighboring municipalities instead of slippery.
Okay. Uh, comments from residents and tenants? Comments up there? Okay. Comments from members of council? Yeah, anything else on the uh, budget?
I think you're on.
Quiet reports, stories, or if anybody have anything, videos that they serve on reports?
I will apologize, the minutes say they're the November minutes, they're actually the September minutes. I was November happy in terms of. But uh, council also has an invitation to the Piper Museum's open house for their holiday.
Hey. Please. Please. Hey. Yeah. Does anyone have anything else to bring to the council? Go ahead, a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Your turn, thank you everyone.